I don't have the gavel. Good afternoon, everyone. I really appreciate everybody coming out this afternoon for our most important board meeting. Got a lot of information to cover today, so we'll get right into the nuts and bolts of it. So, I'll go first and do it like him, calling the order.
Chairman Henry?
Here.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Armachowski? Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Turnbull.
Commissioner Salem?
Here.
Okay, can we have approval of the agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
And probably move in second, roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Armachowski, oops. Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move right to this. Public comments on Agenda Item only, if there's any public comments on Agenda Item. There ain't none. I'd like to entertain and welcome for approval of the minutes, because our meeting begins on August 28th.
So, move in second.
And probably move in second, roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Okay. We're down to new business. We have some resolutions, Resolution 2025-2, the flat tier rents for 2026. And we'll...
Good afternoon. Um, our flat tier rents are renewed each year to determine if they are suitable for our program. Last year in the County of Champaign, we had a median income of $106,000. And so, as of 2025, the median income dropped to $97,800. And so, that causes to make an adjustment to our flat tier rent schedule, which is used for our program to determine the amount of rent the family pays by their income. And so, this is our normal revenue resolution that we present each year to the board. It has to be approved by the board before we can end our January 2026 recertification and annuals. And so, we appreciate you taking the time to review it. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
They pay what, 20%?
They pay, they can pay between 30% to 40%, but it's based on what their income is, it's scheduled. So, it depends on what their level of income is in terms of how much rent they pay. So, it's a flat amount, not based on children, deductions, medical, or anything. It's based on if you make $10,000, you're raised this, so.
If they make, if they don't make anything, what happens?
They're raised a minimum of $100.
So, they still have to pay?
They still have to pay because this is a move toward our program.
Okay. Any questions?
If they switch jobs or anything like that, is it under report or do we?
Yes. Yeah, so they reported it to their particular managers or the specialists and the consideration whether or not the income goes up or not, because the rates are a range. So, maybe a range between $10,000 to whatever. It's usually like a 10% range. And so, if they fall within that same range, there's no change made. But if they fall below or above, then a change is made accordingly.
Then also, what's the cutoff if they make too much?
So, once they get to the point where they are paying all their own rent, our new plan for the MTW is four months. They can stay on the program for four months. If a family's rent is $1,000 and they are paying $800 and they get a new job or make more money and it brings them to that full thousand contract rent, then we allow them to stay on the program for four additional months. These are the times that should change in that time period and then we adjust the rent down accordingly. Or we give them 11%, congratulations, you are now self-sufficient.
So, you have to apply for place after that?
No, they can usually stay where they are or decide to move because at that point they're off the HACC program. If they remain on our program and their income is reduced, they can still stay in their same unit and continue to stay.
But after they graduate and something happens, a crisis happens, are they going to come back to the program?
Well, they would just have to apply when our list opens up or apply to another program, then we may have to.
Any other questions? Any response? There ain't none. We'd like to make a recommendation that we approve Resolution 2025-2, flat tier for 2026.
That's all.
And probably move in second, roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Board, new business, we have a new grant of understanding between the Housing Authority of Champaign County and Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office.
Hey, I'm going to have Jolena come up and she's going to explain the activity, or you know, re-explain the activity to the board and then we'll go through each of them.
Okay.
Um, so, the memorandum of understanding that we're looking for approval today is under our Activity 2025-3 Emergency Housing Support Services, where we're allocating a million of MTW funds to be distributed amongst local organizations to help with immediate emergency housing services. So, like hotels, security deposits, rent, and priorities to help literal homeless. So, people who are, you know, don't have home, are... And so, we're, oh yeah, so eight organizations have sent in proposals and currently looking to get approved for four of those proposals.
Thank you, Jolena. So, the first one for Cunningham Township, they are asking for a rental subsidy for four, for bridge to home units, which is an emergency, emergency shelter. They're also asking for the utilities for that, for those units that they're renting. An emergency, emergency housing for workforce development participants as rental utilities are hotel rooms for 10 workforce development participants. And then, security, security deposit and rental assistance. And so, the total that we are asking the board to approve in this MOU is $367,760. And we just want to make a point that all of the money that we're asking the board to approve is going to direct services to tenants or to community members. None of it is for administrative fees, none of it is for staffing or salaries or anything like that. These are all direct services, so whether it's utilities, rental assistance, something along those lines. And they'll all be reimbursement-based grants, so it doesn't put too much of a burden on our finance department. So, we'll draw this money down at the, when the organization's expended and we'll reimburse them.
So, which one is that? Is that for shelters?
Uh huh, yeah, they have some bridge to home units that are shelter and then it's like some emergency shelter and then they're also looking to do some hotel stays or temporary housing accommodations for people. And then they're also doing rental assistance.
Is that what's up with that one, Stride?
Well, this is for Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office, so we have four that we're going to go through. But this specific one is for Cunningham Township Supervisors.
Can you briefly just, I mean, this is what the grand total is, $367,760, but... It didn't come in that way, but you scaled it back, could you just give us a little bit?
Yes, so the total, what you, what you all will see is the total that we're asking the board to approve among all of the, all of the MOUs, it exceeds a million dollars. And we did that intentionally because we gave certain organizations a little extra wiggle room and we have the flexibility to increase that amount as well if we go over a million dollars, but we don't anticipate that. And so, that's why you'll see the total is above the million that we put in the plan, but we do have the flexibility to be able to go above that million.
So, am I right that the letter here is the request on that point? And this is the memorandum of purchase, so they requested $507,000 and we're providing $367,000. And what, how did we come to the difference?
We determined it based on the things that we said we would not approve, so such as like operating subsidies, staff salaries, things like that. So, we removed that from their, from their ask based on what we...
I'd just like to, after that, I appreciate Ms. Walton and her team carefully reviewing and scrutinizing the, what came in as a request of $570 to better fit and to what she had, she's asking us to approve. I appreciate that because, like I said, it gives us more wiggle room and also to help the other proposals as well. So, I think that's good, I think it's fair and equitable. Other than just take a look at it and say, oh, whoa, okay, we'll just flat out approve that $570,000. It's not necessary. I appreciate what she's doing and the diligence of which she's doing, but wrong with her team.
And then, like on, on this proposal also, you'll see that what they've requested in rental assistance, we actually doubled it with the hope that we can help more people. So, they asked for a certain amount and we gave them more than what we, what they asked for and that was after having a conversation with them and seeing like, what's your capacity? Are you able to do more? Is it possible? Because we have this money and we want to get it spent and we know the winter months are coming. So, if we can get more people who really need the rental assistance, that rental assistance, because Housing Authority can't do it. If we can't have partner organizations that can do it and we can give them the funds to do it and that we felt that that would be the best use of funds.
So, I think all four of these are good programs. And then, they don't get enough money? Can they come back later and you can get more money?
So, we, so we're, these MOUs are still going to have to go to HUD, so we still have to talk with our MTW field office. We followed the initial steps, so we've got to talk with the MTW field office. So, I think we'll plan to do that next week or so. And then, from there, if this goes well, then we do anticipate putting another RFP out in January because these funds have to be expended by December of '17. In January, we'll put out another RFP.
So, with all, with all four who are receiving, who can't receive funds, is there something in place that you put in place to make sure the money stands for this program?
Yes. Well, we're working with all the organizations to establish like what are the required requirements on it. And the MOUs, you'll see that we've requested demographics, we've requested the receipts after the, those purchases have been expended. And then, that's just the easiest way for us to compile it and then send it up to HUD for us to submit it for reimbursement for us.
So, they have to report every monthly or?
Yes, we're looking to do monthly reimbursement.
Not reimbursement, we're reporting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you anticipate any about HUD?
Do we anticipate? I don't anticipate it, but with the current, you know, with everything going on, you know, we never know. But I don't anticipate it. I think it's been pretty smooth, you know, but...
So, when you get word back from HUD, could you just send a, a release just to the commissioners?
Yeah, well, Jennifer, we, we can probably send this up today once the board approves it. And then, they're generally pretty quick to respond to us, so as soon as we get that.
Well, I want to represent you really for doing a great job for telling me, you know, these programs that you're giving us money to, they're going to be celebrated and able to be built. Because then a lot of property comes out there to do stuff with money, and I'm like, I know these programs, so where is word about this money?
Yeah, I agree. That's the same. And Dr. Hur, do you mind if we go through all of them and then just do the...
We'll go through all of them and then we'll talk, talk about the program after.
Okay, and then Champagne Regional Planning Commission, they are another, the second organization that we're asking the board to approve, the MOU for. They're asking for funds to fill the gap. They did receive some HHI funds, so they're asking for additional funds to fill the gap for their Comfort Corner, which is a overflow shelter for emergency family. And so, it'll be a place for families with small children who are experiencing homelessness. So, that, we were asking the board to approve that request as well as security deposit and rental assistance, and the total for that is $431,000 that we're asking the board to approve. So, and direct services, and then what we're asking for their comfort, what they're asking for their Comfort Corner is to, you know, pay for the space, which we're okay with because it's going to be used for shelter, the utilities, materials and supplies, and then laundry services for bedding. Oh.
Are these naivety agreements or does this, should this say December of 2026?
Did it say?
Does this show the three-month agreement or should this be?
Yes, this is just, just through the end of this year that we're trying to get these funds expended and then we anticipate having the same level next year, if not more. And then Champagne County Healthcare Consumers, they are seeking $104,000 to pay for hotel stays, supportive services and housing, rental assistance for the medically fragile population. And so, we're asking the board to approve that. Again, direct services. And then Champagne, Champagne Township, so City of Champagne Township, they're asking for money for supportive services, facility utilities and a contingency fund of about $10,000. And then also rental assistance. And so, that is in the amount of $160,000. Those are the, the ones that we're asking the board to approve.
Um, I think it's a great opportunity for us to help out our community with so many people that are homeless and so many people that are in need and that we are able to do so, so I commend you for a great job.
Thank you. It's the team effort, so everybody, you know. We just, we're looking at ways to get some of this, you know, some of these funds that we have. We want to invest in development, of course, so we're just looking at ways to make a long-term impact in the, in the event that our reserves are taken from us. We're hoping that it doesn't happen, but we're looking at how we can utilize them in the community to make a long-term impact now, so.
Are we issuing these in long term or are we issuing them monthly or what?
Monthly reimbursement, so they have to extend it first, so, and then we'll reimburse them. Otherwise, it will put too much of a burden on our finance department to float all of this money, so.
Should we talk to the finance department, how the finance department? I know it's not time for the finance report, but how the finance department are collecting all of this information and how?
We'll be working with them to get all the data collected, so it's as seamless as possible for them.
And we're able to terminate, like if they, the month of support doesn't look right or we find something that we don't like, we're able to terminate.
Okay. So, do we want to?
Just do the approval for each other.
So, I would like to make a recommendation that we approve Revolution, I mean, the memorandum of understanding that we just reviewed collectively?
Or either B to E.
Is that okay? Is there any, any other questions?
Second.
We probably move in second. Can we have roll call?
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Farland?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Appreciate those comments from Commissioner Parks about the team and, and success and helping out in this most critical area of homelessness and other people that are separated and needing, I think, just stepping up to the plate and, and I would throw champagne county again for runners of this. It's amazing and I want to commend everybody.
Thank you. And thanks to all the organizations that have to do the work.
That's true. Okay.
All right.
I guess we are ready for, is that question? I'll back on you.
All right, so first up, we have our champion of the month. What?
Nothing.
Oh, we have our champion of the month who is Latoya Merriweather. And I asked Ms. Tiffany, he personally brought up, so, for a few words about Latoya.
Well, hello, I'm here for, I am excited to have someone on my team to be nominated for champion of the month. We, you know, I value Latoya's input. Many times, you need that variety and she's one of the elite characters in our group that has a sense of style that's, you know, different from everybody else. And she really sets herself apart in a lot of ways. I think in her mindset and how she views things is totally different. I appreciate her always voicing her opinion because sometimes, you know, people try to, most people who have a difference of opinion, I think we need that and I think she brings that to the table. Sometimes it's viewed as a negative thing, but I think it's voicing her opinion. We're not in a situation where we can't, you know, express ourselves. I appreciate her being at the forefront and being uniquely who she really is. Sometimes people try to change their personality, that's just not her kind of style, you know? So, she's just one of those kind of people that, you know, if I could really truly say, and she appreciates this, me saying this, you either like or you don't. And, and she, she's okay with either, but she really is a team player. If I ask her to do anything, if she just doesn't understand, she definitely will ask for clarity and that is something that, for me, I value as being a director because I rely on them to do what they do to make me look good as well, you know? And so, I do appreciate you, Latoya. I'm grateful that you were, expended this opportunity to be champion of the month. Come on up here. I know you probably got something to say. She ain't quiet as she act like she is. But yeah, so again, I'm going to say glad to have you, congratulations.
I want to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm excited to be here for my birthday and also I love the one raised in Burton Village, from the north, that way. So, I'm very happy to be one of Lily's angels and work with, and send this message out because I'm ready to do my loving, very dangerous activities, so thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
When we ask you, Latoya, I feel watching you is a little cute, you know?
And then we have two Youth Build Student of the Month, Shavon's going to say a few words about those young people.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
All right, and truly feel fashion. The students are on their way up here and one of them missed a step in the van. And so, we're going to wait for you to come here. But we have two students of the month this time. So, the first one is young man, Maran. He's doing awesome since being in our program. He raised a little bit of legal trouble. The team worked with him and he's back on track and just finished his nice little diploma and is looking forward to get her ship her job placement. So, awesome young man there. And then to Mia, interesting story about her, this is her second time through Youth Build. The first time she did make it, she was not happy with me at all. But this time around, she's came back and she's been, she's got a great bubbly personality. I got on her last week and she jumped three credits and so she went from like 10 to like 17 after getting on her a little bit. So, she's doing very well and so they're awesome young people and glad to have them in our program. And then, don't forget our upcoming graduation on November 8th.
Shameless plug. Thank you, guys. And so, on September 11th, we had a really cool experience. We had two of our Youth Build alumni, or one active student and one alumni, they're twin brothers. They attended the Community Coalition Meeting and they spoke on a panel of, you know, of young people on gun violence. And Reverend Parks was there, so he can tell you how great they did. We're so proud of them. They made the news gazette and got a lot of positive comments and a lot of positive feedback from the, the things that they said about the program as well as about their views on gun violence in the community. So, it was really great to be a part of that.
Absolutely. They represented Youth Build well. I was well pleased with the fact that they were open and honest about their journey and how Youth Build helped them through their journey and things that they needed. And one of them had a great question that made the whole room go quiet. His question was, how, why is it easier to get a gun than a job? We still waiting on the answer. They, they were outstanding.
They were. It was, it was great, really great and really powerful to watch them talk about their, their journeys. We also have some September supportive services updates. Three families received security deposit assistance in the amount of $4,720. One received application fee assistance in the amount of $50. Three received utility assistance in the amount of $7,765. One received furniture assistance in the amount of $453. One bus pass of $60. And two received emergency housing or hotel stays. So, the total for this month was $8,566. What were you shaking here for?
I think you're mad.
Oh. A good catch, all right. So, um, yeah, so we, but as you can see, the amounts that we're spending are decreasing and that's because leasing is, is up, so. That's the next slide. The LFS team, they hosted on September 18th Job and Resource Fair. It was very well attended. It was excellent job on their part. So, they had several different businesses there, so thank you to all the community partners who came out to support that. Youth Build has been hosting a study group, so in addition to their, their classes, we have the, the young people who are behind, some of the young people who are behind on getting their high school diploma. They've been staying after a couple days a week, Tuesday and Wednesday from 3:00 to 5:00 to work on the study group and Jolena and Peyton have been spearheading that. We, on September 17th, we hosted a homeownership lunch and learn and we brought down a gentleman by the name of Jimmy Stewart. He's from Chicago Housing Authority and he runs their homeownership program, which is something that we're really trying to get started here in Champagne. And so, we invited a bunch of lenders and realtors out and they, you know, came and, and got to learn about how Chicago Housing Authority runs their homeownership program with the goal of helping us eventually get ours started. And so, Jennifer is kind of working on that and spearheading that and so she'll be bringing together a smaller group of those lenders and realtors that, so that we can start like an actual, we have homeownership programs, so we have the, you know, down payment assistance and the second mortgage. But what we're looking to do is start a homeownership program where people can use their vouchers toward the mortgage essentially. So, not exactly like that, but that's more so the concept. And Chicago Housing Authority does that and so we got a really great lesson on it and, and, you know, made a really good partner out of Mr. Stewart, so we're really looking forward to that.
Your home, um, program, will they teach them also if, you know, they, when, um, when they're on the home, when they're, if they have to do a full closure, what would they do? How can they get out of there, something like that?
Yeah, so I guess essentially they'll be, you know, homeownership counseling, pre and post counseling that's provided under this program. It's going to be mandatory under this program. So, they'll get, you know, a good roundabout education on, on what it means to be a homeowner and how that works.
Because there are people that play the fourth floor, they don't even know what to do when they go in. You don't know, is it a way you can get out of it? Or is it a way that you can fix it? Ever be good, you know, go home?
Yes, definitely. Oh, I think that's a slide from last month. Um, Youth Build also went to CN75, that was their incentive field trip this, this past month. And so, they did laser tag arcade games, so all of the young people who are on track to graduate who are getting their credits, they got to attend this incentive trip. And then, just a picture of them out building. They've been building all kind of stuff. So, they've, they've been really busy these, these last couple months. They built a garden, they participated in Habitat for Humanities, raised the wolf. They built like a cat tree, so they've been really busy getting those hands-on skills. And so, I just wanted to share a picture of that. And then from there, it's the financials with Michael.
Uh, we have to, uh, officially, I, I start with the, the questions. And then the financials, but I'll do it in reverse for this time. Just so that I can emphasize a little more on the second part. This is our real versus bracket. As of August, we have, uh, our total income is $20,000. This is our real versus budget. As of August, we have, our total income is $20 million, which is exceeding our projected budget by a million two hundred. However, our financial statements are a little, I don't know if I use the word contaminated, but there's factors that are kind of creating a little bit of distortions from what's being reflected due to the fact that there's some expenses that are being actually funded from our healthcare reserves. So, that's why I mentioned in the last meeting that on the column that says moving to work, I actually put those healthcare reserves to separate them from the operations. The other part is the operating expenses, which were actually pretty much a little bit exceeded, but not dramatically. On the next page, please. Okay, these are the budget components, which are the ones that we have total control over. In this case, we are a little, well, we're under budget on the revenue part. However, we are actually doing a good job on the operating expenses, which is kind of, in a way, reducing the deficit there. The second part that I mentioned is the disbursements that we've done in the month of August. And I, that first total of $37,000 is out of Calcium Authority, because we have other accounts. Could you please, the next page? I want to, it's a little small three maybe, but I think you make up a figure in your hands, but I usually want to point out the most significant disbursements we've had. And we paid almost $37,700 to Champaign County Collector. These are actually property taxes, among them, $18,000 with the second installment of Bennett, Doggo, Seven Madison. And also, second installment on Castle. So, just those properties were $31,000, but I also want to point out that this was the second 50% of the property taxes. So in total, on just those properties, Central, Madison, Castle, we've paid about $65,000, excuse me, $62,500. I think that, I just, I want to point this out because normally, property taxes are paid on the following year. So I think it's important that these acquisitions to look at the settlements, because normally, the buyer will get credit for the taxes, because they're gonna have to pick them up the following year. So that's one thing I wanted to point out about these property taxes. I've also sent an email to, to where cancel, about trying to see if we can do some pilot arrangements, because normally that makes, that's property due taxes, so, excuse me, paid in lieu taxes. So that usually decreases the property taxes to a calculation of the revenue minus the utilities, and that usually comes out to an amount that's much smaller. We have that for several of our buildings, we've had it for years. Also, to the City of Urbana, we paid $17,700, which, out of which, $14,000 are environmental reuse for the H.I.I.P. rent houses. Also, we have a 50% down payment for HVAC and plumbing, which I think is for Central. With first followers, we had two significant disbursements, $10,000 and almost $13,000 in the second one. So these are renovations we're doing to W Square in the first case, and over trace, we're actually renovating units so that we can determine a condition to be able to rent them. And expectation is to get that refunded from our healthcare reserves. Also, pretty much on the similar situation with JP Contractors, that we paid $20,000 and $16,000. An auto survey for Learman of $11,000 to Precision Engineering. Also, we paid stock office furniture, $49,000 that were actually furniture for the Worksors Development Center in Castle. We did get that money funded from our healthcare reserves. And finally, Waters Electric Boil Contracting, $70,000 for a wood tub in New York. And on the next page, please. Last one, please. Out of the Maple Grove Development Corporation, $190,000 to for deconstruction for the Maple Grove renovation. It's my understanding that there's gonna be one more payment before we complete that. One thing I wanted to mention, that I, about the yard implementation. We actually would like a yard in September, at least the finance area. Other than HCD and the other areas have already been putting out some information before September. And I say that because some of you may have got in some communication with landlords. It's, we're already the, all the issues with database, the migration, everything, so we've been working on that. Even I got a call from the place I used to work for. But I mean, we're working on that, actually, we have most, most everything resolved. And even things, little things like, not with the letters, but with the banners, checks that we were sending them, I don't know if you ever noticed that the check has on the bottom the routing number, the account number, and these little characters there. So those little characters actually were causing some problems. And I know for a fact that the mobile we posted that were causing some problems there. By now, we've gotten that set.
So you're saying that you have seen significant progress with operations of?
Absolutely, yes, yes. I mean, as I was telling this on this morning, you know, the month is a good, because of all these
That's good.
Of this stage of migration.
It's been a little bit of a challenge for everybody, I think we're hearing it across the board. But we're almost, we're almost over.
I actually, when I was taking the classes, all the comments from the people who had yarding was, "It's painful, but at the end of the day, it's gonna be good, it's a good software." I just didn't get to read that.
Gotta have some growing pain when you make change, growing pain when you make change, so that's great.
Thanks, Miguel. And then a quick update before we close on the Columbia Place renovations. So we wanted to have a contractor ready for today, but he wasn't ready. But the, we selected a contractor, and the architect and the contractor are working through the final contract, and so we anxious to pay having an early board meeting in October, so that we can get that approved as soon as possible and get those renovations underway. But we are, we have a contractor and almost a contract, yes, James?
And the city has a plan, the city's only kind of here, so it doesn't pay for it.
Alright, so we are next.
Okay, so we're ready to entertain a motion for the financial report from Mr. Miguel. So I entertain a motion to approve agent's report.
Oh, I'm a little, approve guy's report.
Can probably move, since probably move in second, Roqah?
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull. Commissioner Salem.
Yes.
Okay, are there any comments on non-agenda items? Hearing none, there's no need for both session items. So, I would like to entertain a motion for, in a second, for adjournment.
Pat, Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious, we have several new faces in the room, I'm just curious who these might be.
I think we have representatives from Cunningham Township, and healthcare consumers, Champagne County healthcare consumers. And of course, we've got City of Champaign, they always come. And then City of Champaign Township. And is that it? Or do we have, I don't know if RPC, anyone from RPC is here?
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. Would anybody, before we close, would anybody like to make any comments or anything?
I would say greetings. Literally. Greetings to the board and to everyone, Mike and Shayla Keanon Bassfries. I'm the kind of still new deputy supervisor with Cunningham Township, under Daniel Chinowitz. And I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the funds to allow us to continue to operate, and all the work that we've been doing, and we will continue to do. So just thank you, thank you very much. We're approving our NLU.
Thank you very much. Just give us your name and step in for me, please.
Hello, my name is Claudia Lenhoff, and I'm the executive director of Champaign County Healthcare Consumers. And I cannot begin to tell you what a blessing these funds are, what a relief it is to be able to get these funds, because I have really been stressing about the people who we are looking after, who are literal homeless, medically fragile. We're helping them to stay in hotels, we've been running out of money, I've been scared to death about what's gonna happen to these folks. And by the way, a lot of these folks do have income, because we have helped them successfully apply for disability. But, for example, the SSI program, which many people end up qualifying for if they don't have enough work credits to qualify for SSI. SSI is only $967 a month, and so the barriers to getting housed are really significant. And they have to do with being able to meet a deposit requirement, or deposit at first and last month's rent, or, you know, things like that. Even, you know, submitting applications chips away at a person's budget. And so we have folks who, we will be able to help with these funds, and I just wanted to say thank you so much. This funding could not come at a better time, and I'm very confident that we'll be able to help people stay out the streets in the winter and get into their own homes. So, thank you so much.
Yes, well, I just say thank you, because me sitting on this board, I used to be a visitor volunteer at your place, and hallelujah, we got the hometown governance award. So I remember your program, and your program do great work. I'm a product of it.
Thank you, thank you. And we collaborate with a lot of organizations and fund it, so we'll do great things with this money. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for your work, and thank you for helping me to understand a little more about the important things for an important cause of honor of meaning.
Thank you, I'm Rob Kowalski with the City of Champaign, and I want to echo those thanks and thank you for your commitment to providing this funding. The City of Champaign is not a recipient of the money, of course, but we're all playing on the same team. Our homeless system and our resources is stressed, as we all know right now. The city's been able to contribute six to seven million dollars from ARCA funding primarily to help strive over the past several years. But we all know that the reference did not pass, and so we're all scrambling trying to figure out how to provide for those that need it most. This certainly helps, this funding certainly helps us bridge a gap as we continue to work as a community to figure that out. So just want to thank you, Lily and the board, so much for providing this funding and helping at a time where it's needed most. Thanks.
Thank you. No more comments? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. So move.
Second?
Then probably move in second. At 3:53 PM, we are considered adjourned.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.